The physical, we're delivering not our individual.
City Council Chamber thirty. All this meeting in order, notice of a regular meeting, October seventh, twenty twenty four at five P M. City Council Chamber thirty nine forty seven Lincoln Avenue, Groves, Texas. Could all rise for the prayer and pledge.
Veterans uncover parade dress. Lord God, we thank you for all you many blessings. We ask that you be with us today. Help us to uh do what your will is and not our individual wheels are. Help us to have unity and peace. Lord God, and help us to make the decisions you want us to make in order to glorify your name. We just ask these things in Christ's name. Amen. Veterans attention, cover. And salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Two.
Thank you for that. Item four, roll call city clerk.
Mayor Born.
Here.
Mayor Proton McAdams.
Here.
House Member Degas.
Here.
House Member Oliver.
Here.
House Member McNews.
Here.
Like to welcome everybody to tonight's meeting. Item six would be reports. Do you have any reports? No, no reports at this time. We'll move on to item number seven, which would be citizen comments. Like to remind everybody under citizen comments, the council will not be responding to anything that's said. And also to keep your comments civil. And will not be tolerating any council staff or any uh one to be individually persecuted. So I will call for citizen comments. Come to the podium, you can state your name and address.
I'm Mitchell Preval speaking three hundred and seventy go for your drive. I had some assumptions for the body of the mayor. First, I'd like to miss out on. Through this album. Scerissa, city manager, this could buy this. I have some documents I'd like to provide to the body if they ever take it.
Yeah.
I won't be discussing your circumstances, I would actually keep it all out. I have I did email this to the whole government and body, so y'all should already have it. Representing the sir.
Don, would you take it and pass it, please?
I'll try to make it quick. I know we have a very good. Back to people here, so. We get down to my business. I'd like to start committing a couple of people to take the voodoo. You're fair and I'm fair, I mean you're there. Former officer Roman, city secretary here to go on their job, Mr. Rissel. Finally, the current of the police station for seasons. I'd also note within that substance, there is a blank. I would like to cease and desist that complaint, all suggestions for consulting and building better relationships with the police. Next in my comments, I would like to talk about article seventeen, section four of the city order. The city marshal shall be on duty at all times. As directed by the city manager during our intense emails that they prior, no one was available for this. However, no complaint is involved. In fact, no one has been available since September twenty sixth, in which the statement of being absent for a week, and that was about a third. For the case two, I'm going to make it pretty bold. I was told I cannot be on the agenda. However, when I filed with the city manager's office, I filed a particular code. And it should be filed within the office six's government code five five ones at zero zero seven. Also would like to remind his body of seven six eight, so again, turning in addition on their service section. After I filed that less than twenty four hours, the president turned immediate executive session. I would like to say intermediate executive session twenty four hours without with my code. Rose went from a community to a city until nineteen fifty. That's seven two years, though not one black police officer on the force. I would like to see some of it on the agenda to diversify that. From my understanding, many people have something here to be in relation because the black community, the Hispanic community, it doesn't take one person to put an item on the agenda, everybody can do it. I had emailed every member supporting evidence of my claims. Some 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 of the claims are horrible to say here in this office and it's still on the same in their call. Even from the doctor magistrate himself. Now, the treatment of the peace officers. My concerns consist of violations of constitutional rights, bias and disregard of public policy, and not the duty promised to we the people. Violation include freedom of movement and oath of office. Simple one, please. Excuse me. Now I was transparent as possible. Thank you, Mr. Cruz, for being transparent with me. Thank you, Mr. Cruz, for being transparent with me. I'll share a document. And request the proper procedure to give an item on the agenda. I even emailed again every member on this body. Of the one executive position. I'll finish with code, I'm sorry to quote President, former President George W. Bush. There's an old saying in Tennessee. I know it's in Texas. Probably in Tennessee. It says, who be once? Same old. Same on you. Oh, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any other citizen comments? Go for your water.
I'll do the little nervous, I'm sorry.
Name and address, sir.
My name is Darryl Gonzalez, live at thirty two hundred East Parkway in Ward Ford, City of Groves. I've lived there for thirty plus years. Good evening, thank y'all for allowing me to speak. First, let me tell you a little bit about myself. I'm a retired firefighter of almost thirty three years from the city of Fort Austin. Within that tenure, I've held multiple offices for committees to president my local. I was graciously elected to the office of District Four Vice President of the Texas State Association of Firefighters, which I held that office for ten years. I represented forty two locals across mid, east, and southeast Texas. I presently hold the title of Vice President Emeritus of the Texas State Association of Firefighters for life. I'll tell you this, so you will know that I've been involved and presided over capitalist meetings, hearings, court cases, arbitration cases, meetings and hearings at the state, city, and federal levels. In all these cases, there has been heated debate, but I've never been involved in a meeting or a hearing as to what I saw in our Groves E D C last month. The contentiousness, the rudeness, and lack of decorum was appalling. The way the president of the E D C spoke to our business owners and fellow members was outrageous. We all know that attracting new businesses to establish in Groves is hard. We as a city and as E D C should do whatever we can to attract new and strive to keep established businesses here in our city. How can we do that? When they in the public witness phone video, the banner, or lack of, in which the president of our E D C speaks to the public, the business owners of our city, and her fellow members? Then she goes on Facebook and local news and continues her attacks. I know y'all seen the post and watched the news coverage. There are a few things I'd like to bring to your attention. First, she claims she has the right to say whatever.
Mr. Gonzalez, please keep it broad. Do not pinpoint any one particular person on the E D C, please.
Yes, sir. Alright, uh. When you speak to somebody, you don't have the, as a public citizen, you have the right to speak however you want, say whatever you want. But. Let's see, I can do that. Uh but as a representative of our city, you don't have that. The first thing I would like to point out is in the posting. Well, again, I don't know if I can say this also. I'm now skip to this thing. Uh next, uh. Presiding over the meeting is a president's job to keep the corn in the meeting and not to spin it out of control. The job of the president is to stay calm and redirect the meeting if it does get out of control. Our business owners are there for financial help and reimbursement according to the guidelines to help their businesses thrive. If they feel that the numbers being presented to the committee are wrong, this is their time to speak up, not as an argument, but to help clarify what they're asking for. Watching the video of the meeting, in my opinion, that is what she was trying to do, and the other E D C members were perceptive of this. At the during the meeting. Because of the questioning of the numbers. The meeting was abruptly tried to be adjourned in an illegal manner. When questioned to the attorney whether that could happen or not, he tried to explain that that is an illegal proceed. To try to adjourn without, in just a manner of, you should know throwing down the gavel and saying it's over, you cannot do that. Okay, uh. Presidents should strive to make sure that all business conducted in the E D C is correct and helpful to our business owners. And at this point, the meeting totally got out of control, with people yelling at each other, telling each other one should leave, the other should leave. Uh you know, again, it tried to be adjourned illegally. Uh I could go on about the meeting. But then we all seen it, so we all know what happened. Uh now let's get back to a post that I read on, on Facebook, about the E C E D C meeting. Isn't that post, there were name calling? There was uh supposedly the business owners are demanding money, which I never heard that. The rest of the E D the E D C members there were trying to. Get this this problem taken care of and so the business owners could give it their money. Uh sometimes if they don't, that's causing the clothes not having that that funds. It was only, they. Again, I've got to write down what I wanted to say, but I'm trying to keep up with your asking point. Uh the owner would have to wait a whole month in order to get that money if the meeting, if the input had been tabled because of. Her trying to explain to the U C members what her case was. And when you're standing in front of a committee such as I am now. As a business owner, and I am not, but I've, you know, I've been involved with plenty of them. It is their time to speak, just like it's my time to speak now. To try to shut that down is unconstitutional. They should be able to speak and try to get the numbers right to all committee members. That way, the committee members can make a logical, knowledgeable decision. When you call citizens, council members, and business owners and leaders of our committee, enemies of the city. That's taking it too far. Our our, everyone here is here to help our city, I would hope. And I would hope that all E D C members are there to help the city and the business owners. Uh. If a president of a committee cannot control themselves, then how do you expect the rest of the committee to control themselves? It is the president's job to keep the meeting civil, to produce the best outcome for all involved. When you try to. Shut somebody down from speaking, especially when they're asking for counseling. In my opinion, that's abuse of power. As a president, we have, we have some power. The power should be used to help, not to hurt. When you try to shut somebody down. From giving you, all they're trying to do is get the right information out. That is abuse of power. And it's uncalled, especially through a city sanctioned meeting. So in closing, I would just like to say that, in my opinion, I believe we need a new E D C president. One that'll work for others, with others, and try to get the business of the city done, to help our business owners and not hurt them. Uh thank y'all for letting me speak to you today.
Thank you, Mr. Cruz. Any other citizen comments?
Ken Martin says one hundred, Eugenia Langro, Texas, Ward Ford. You're representing Post V F W forty eight twenty four, nature's Texas. Just like my quick comment, one thing that we always need to remember, to give respect, we gotta give it. That's one thing. Having said that, that's all I've got to say about that because we are a political organization. Today, and I didn't even bring my speech, but today is the twenty third anniversary of O E F. Okay, started twenty three years ago today, and that's pretty much my speech on that. It's over with now. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Any other citizen comments? Last call, citizen comments. Mr. Drew is good out there. Okay. Move on to item number eight, receive the minutes of the September twenty third, twenty twenty four planning and zoning meeting. Everybody received a copy in their package. Item nine, deliberate act to approve the minutes of the September twenty third, twenty twenty four joint public hearing.
Make a motion, we deliberate and act and approve the minutes September twenty third, twenty twenty four joint public hearing.
Have a motion and a second to deliberate and act to approve the minutes of the September twenty third, twenty twenty four joint public hearing. Do you have any questions? No questions, vote on the motion, mayor votes aye, mayor pro ten McAdams.
Aye.
Councilmember Canitas.
Aye.
Councilmember Oliver.
Aye.
Councilmember Dugus. Motion passes. Item ten, deliberate and act to approve the minutes of the twenty, September twenty third, twenty twenty four city council meeting.
Make a motion, we deliberate and act to approve the minutes of the September twenty third, two thousand twenty four council meeting.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to deliberate and act to approve the minutes of the September twenty third, twenty twenty four city council meeting. Do you have any questions? No questions, vote on the motion, mayor votes aye, mayor pro ten McAdams.
Aye.
Councilmember Canitas.
Aye.
Councilmember Oliver. Councilmember Dugus. Motion passed. Item eleven, deliberate and act on ordinance twenty twenty four dash sixteen, authorizing a specific use permit for gaming machines and game rooms at sixty nine hundred thirty second. And remember, you can make the motion with just the ordinance number.
I make a motion, we deliberate and act on ordinance twenty twenty four dash sixteen.
One second.
Have a motion and a second to deliberate and act on ordinance twenty twenty four dash sixteen. Do you have any questions? Don, have they completed everything as satisfied with the planning and zoning as well?
Yes.
Uh Mr. Monk, is there no reason to read it? Okay. Any other questions? No other questions, vote on the motion. Mayor votes aye, mayor pro ten McAdams.
Aye.
Councilmember Canitas.
Aye.
Councilmember Oliver. Councilmember Dugus. Motion passes. Item twelve, deliberate and act on ordinance twenty twenty four dash twenty two. Authorizing a specific use permit for gaming machines and game rooms at twenty six hundred main.
Make a motion, we deliberate and act on ordinance twenty twenty four dash twenty.
Sorry.
Have a motion and a second to deliberate and act on ordinance twenty twenty four dash twenty two. Do you have any questions? Same question. Everything's good. Any other question? No other questions, vote on the motion, mayor votes aye, mayor pro ten McAdams.
Aye.
Councilmember Canitas.
Aye.
Councilmember Oliver. Councilmember Dugus. Motion passes. Item thirteen, deliberate and act on ordinance twenty twenty four dash twenty three. Authorizing a specific use permit for gaming machines and game rooms at twenty six ten Bain Avenue.
Make a motion, we deliberate and act on ordinance twenty twenty four dash twenty three. Second.
Have a motion and a second to deliberate and act on ordinance twenty twenty four dash twenty three. Do you have any questions? Great, thanks. Any other questions? No other questions, vote on the motion, mayor votes aye, mayor pro ten McAdams. Councilmember Canitas.
Aye.
Councilmember Oliver.
Aye.
Councilmember Dugus. Motion passes. Item fourteen, deliberate and act on a resolution approving the submission of the Texas Community Development Block Grant Program application to the Texas Department of Agriculture. For the twenty twenty five dash twenty twenty six Community Development Fund, and authorizing the mayor and the city manager to negotiate and execute all necessary documents.
On the motion that we deliberate and act on a resolution approving the submission of a Texas Community Development Block Grant Program. Application to the Texas Department of Agriculture for the twenty twenty five dash twenty twenty six Community Development Fund. And authorizing the mayor and city manager to negotiate and execute all necessary documents.
Sir.
Have a motion and a second to deliberate and act on a resolution approving the submission of the Texas Community Development Block Grant Program application. To the Texas Department of Agriculture for the twenty twenty five dash twenty twenty six Community Development Fund. And authorizing the mayor and city manager to negotiate and execute all necessary documents. Do you have any questions?
Mayor, council, uh this is just to authorize the application. Uh there will be a map required for this, but there is a long lead time in the match to not come out until uh. At the earliest, uh the next fiscal year, possibly the fifth year after that. So we don't have the the project identified as of yet, more like, uh a utility project to their water. This is the first in process.
Mr. Cruz, right here, it says that it's up to the seven hundred fifty thousand, so we would also, if we got the full seven fifty, we would have to match the seven fifty.
No, no, it's uh. It's just a small. It's a hundred and twelve.
Hundred and twelve thousand.
Okay.
Good, good evening. I'm Sophie Lyndon. I am the app writer assigned to program works for the association, so I'm prepared for any questions that I have. Um including about the grant, um the process for the match.
So the match would be a hundred and twelve thousand five hundred dollars cash.
Uh, one of the. Point categories, uh since the grant is in competitive grant application, is the match amount. Um and it is based on your population size, so because the city has a population of seventeen thousand one hundred and ten. Uh citizens within its um boundaries, uh anyone over any city above ten thousand to get the maximum amount of points on that would be fifteen percent, which would be a hundred and twelve thousand, so.
If awarded, when would the match be due?
Um, so the contract for this would not be signed, um if you are awarded, and there are two awarded, so if you get um. It's a two year grant, so that if you're within the first top ones, it would be um. February of twenty twenty five, um when the contract would be um. Signed, but that doesn't necessarily mean that that whole amount would be, it would probably be spread out through a couple of minutes, it wouldn't just all come out of the front. And then if you are um in the second part, your contract wouldn't be signed until twenty twenty seven. So um you would have at least one or two facilities before that match is required.
Thank you. Write that back up into the presentation. It depends on what the project comes in.
Any other question?
Of course, when the projects approved, and then the actual construction of the project, I mean that that can go.
It's a two year, so you have two years from when the contract is signed to the closeout of the project. So once you get that contract signed, it is go, 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 to make sure that um all of that construction can be done within that time, or there will be a. Panel, what, you will be penalized for subsequent grants.
But the money's up. At the time of that's awarded.
It probably won't be, I think, um I don't have the reservation for anything, but I think it's just instruction on. Um, so in another one, we'll uh. And one of the subsequent resolutions will have to pass, um we usually try to put that it means for constructions, not until the construction start, will you then. Have that off, so it won't, even if you get awarded in twenty twenty five, February twenty twenty five, construction's not gonna start right there, because we'll have to get engineer to do all the drawings and the bids and everything like that, so it'll be a little bit easier.
All right, any other question? No other questions, vote on the motion, mayor votes aye, mayor pro ten McAdams.
Aye.
Councilmember Canitas.
Aye.
Councilmember Oliver.
Aye.
Councilmember Dugus. Motion passes. Item fifteen, deliberate and act on ordinance twenty twenty four dash twenty, uh twenty twenty four dash twenty four, authorizing the settlement of the Texas Gas Service Company's statement of intent to increase rates within the central Gulf service area.
Make a motion, we deliberate and act on ordinance twenty point four there.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to deliberate and act on ordinance twenty twenty four dash twenty four. Do you have any questions? We'll need to read this one, even.
The mayor and council, we literally took action on this, uh this a couple of years ago. Like you died with a writing brace. Uh, this is moved very quickly. So our, our, uh, consultant law firm has, is suggesting that we, uh, agree to the, uh, proposed settlement. Um, still represent a twenty percent reduction, what the gas company was requesting. And, uh, the average residential customer will see a dollar eighty-four increase. Their original increase was somewhere in the five to six dollar range, the way it's all structured. So uh, this is a, a, a good outcome.
Any other question? No other questions, vote on the motion, mayor votes aye, mayor pro ten McAdams, council member Canitas, council member Oliver, council member Dugus. Motion passes. Item sixteen, deliberate an act on a resolution immediately removing council member Rhonda Dugus from the Groves Economic Development Corporation Board of Directors.
I make a motion, we deliberate an act on resolution or meters, removing council member Rhonda Dugus from the Groves Economic Development Corporation Board of Directors.
Have a motion in a second to deliberate an act on a resolution immediately removing council member Rhonda Dugus from the Groves Economic Development Corporation Board of Directors. Do you have any questions? Mr. Monk, we need to read the resolution. That's. Yes, sir. Monk, do you see any benefits with reading this?
It's not required.
Okay.
The resolution does specify and it would be read publicly. So if we're not going to read it, we just need to make that clear.
I'll read it.
My question.
Resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero nine, the resolution of the city council of the city of Groves, Texas, removing council member Rhonda Dugus from the Groves Economic Development Corporation Board of Directors, condemning, denouncing, and apologizing for the conduct of the September twenty-third, twenty twenty-four meeting and the treatment of those with business before the board and the censoring of city council member Rhonda Dugus. Whereas on December seventh, twenty twenty, Ward four city council member Rhonda Dugus joined the Groves Economic Development Corporation Board of Directors. Whereas council member Dugus was entrusted with the office of president of the Groves EDC Board on October twenty-third, twenty twenty-three. Whereas Article three point zero two of the Groves Economic Development Corporation bylaws state that the board of directors shall serve at the pleasure of the city council. Whereas Section six point B of Council decorum and procedures policy requires that the conduct of council members and their official affairs be above reproach. Whereas on September twenty-third, twenty twenty-four, Groves Economic Development Corporation Board Meeting, Council Member in Groves Economic Development Council. Yeah. President Dugus failed as presiding officer to maintain decorum in the meeting, whereas at the same EDC meeting and over the following several days, social media council member and the EDC president Dugus harassed and belittled economic Economic Development Corporation colleagues as well as members of the public who had business before the Groves EDC Board. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Groves that it is no longer the pleasure of the city council for Rhonda Dugus to serve on the board of directors of the Groves Economic Development Corporation. And two, the city of growth, the city, the Groves City Council expresses its sincere apologies to those who attended or may have viewed the September twenty-third, twenty twenty-four EDC Board Meeting for the conduct of the meeting and the treatment of those with business before the board. And number three, the Groves City Council condemns and denounces council member Dugus' attack on colleagues and citizens in the strongest possible terms and finds such behavior irreconcilable with the responsibilities of the Groves City Council member and officer and member of the Groves Economic Development Corporation. Number four, city council member and Groves EDC president Rhonda Dugus shall be censored with the public reading of this resolution. Passed, approved, and adopted at the regular meeting of the city council, city of Groves, held on the seventh day of October, twenty twenty-four. We have any discussion? There's no discussion, we'll vote on the motion.
Sweet people to get their say-so out. My name is Rhonda Dugus. I am a whistleblower in Groves, Texas. I have exposed the plan and the modus operandi of the good old boy political machine and lobbyists. They have many factions and tentacles in every area of our life. This incident has been a psychological study in the mean girl syndrome, the herd mentality, kangaroo court, with Chris Bourne as the leader of it all. I have apologized to the city through my interview with K F D N. Even though I was still being attacked by Sidney Baden and Katie Zegib as she increased her campaign against me by her fantasy that the downtown businesses are afraid of me.
Point of order, mayor, I thought we weren't going to call our people's names.
Political agenda to interfere in this election and the influence's outcome.
Ms. Dugus, council member Dugus, I'm going to ask you to stop. I'm going to ask you to stop one more time. Council member Dugus, I'm going to ask you to stop. If you do not stop, you will be removed from this meeting.
Everybody has had their say-so. You had your say-so. I have a right to have mine. They need to know what really happened. They need to know that you and Sidney Baden set me up. You've been planning this for a long time. They need to know that those applications were correct. They need to know.
Council member Dugus, please contain yourself and act in a civil meeting.
You contain yourself. You have sat up here.
Ms. Dugus, if you cannot contain yourself, you will be removed from this meeting.
You better do it with handcuffs and arrest me. You got it? Hmm?
Yes, sir.
Because I have a right to have my say-so. You've let other people have their say-so against me. You read your say-so.
Council member Dugus.
I have a right to my say-so.
Keep it civil.
This is civil. Oh, this is civil.
Calling people names.
Time after time yelled and hollered and screamed at me and bitched in these meetings against me. You have verbally abused me for over two years. Not one man on this council stood up and told you no.
I'm going to ask you to stop what you're doing. You can speak your piece. But as I've instructed everyone else, no name-calling and no pointing people out.
Sidney Baden, you, others, Pete Canitas, they're all involved.
Council member Dugus, if you can't refrain from that, I will have you removed.
Okay, you better get the handcuffs and arrest me. And you better make those charges stick.
I had a point of order call.
I don't.
May we revert back to the vote?
Sidney Baden escalated that difference of opinion strictly because I won't allow.
Council member Dugus, please stop.
I won't allow him to make rules that would interfere and hurt the businesses in Groves. I stopped him from doing that. That made him angry. And you.
Are there any other discussions?
To this city and these people in the city.
Council member Dugus, I'm not going to let you call me a liar. So please stop, just please stop, just stop.
I've helped businesses in Groves. I've been doing it for four years. Not one person has ever been afraid of me.
There's no other discussion, we can vote on the motion.
Uh, there's, I'm, I'm not finished. I'm not through. Your old friend, uh, Mr. Gonzalez stood up here talking about Facebook. What about the Facebook that's been against me? I went to, I communicated with three attorneys, three attorneys. I'm going to sue Katie Zegib for what she said against me on Facebook.
Ms. Dugus, please stop attacking the citizens.
You brought social media up.
Please stop.
In this resolution. Every attorney told me that I cannot sue. She has protection and I have no protection under the law. So Pete, you might want to take a little bit of notes on that one.
You refer to people on this council as council member.
Oh, excuse me, council member Canitas.
Call the question.
Point of order has been called, question's been asked, we will vote on the motion. Mayor votes aye, mayor pro ten McAdams, council member Canitas, council member Oliver, council member Dugus.
I swear.
Motion pass.
I proved those lies were. This is what you did.
Please stop.
You let them, but you won't let me have my say-so. You won't let.
We're going to move on with this meeting.
But you let everyone else have it.
Item seventeen, deliberate an act on the October seventh, twenty twenty-four meeting.
Make a motion with deliberate an act on October seventh, twenty twenty-four invoice list.
Oh, sir.
Have a motion in a second to deliberate an act on October seventh, twenty twenty-four invoice list. Any questions?
Yes. Did he make a?
I'm, I'm going to read it tonight.
Oh, yeah.
He lost his voice.
He's on it.
First one will be Brentag Southwest Inc. Sodium Hydroxide for the water plant, eight thousand four hundred seventy-six dollars and eighty-seven cents. The next one is heat safety equipment LLC, one new air pack and three new thirty-year, forty-five-minute SCBA bottles, eleven thousand four hundred and eight dollars and ninety-eight cents. The third would be Lewis F. McLean, sales tax analysis, subscription, seven thousand eight hundred and fifty-five dollars. Number four, Messer, Ford, and McDonald, legal, personal issues, fire negotiations, legal and travel, fourteen thousand five hundred and sixty-six dollars and nineteen cents. Number five is Novus Wood Group, wood chipping and hauling, forty thousand six hundred and eight dollars. And the last one is PDS DX Inc. Chlorine for the water plant, six thousand eight hundred sixty-one dollars and sixty cents. Total of eighty-nine thousand seven hundred and seventy-six dollars and sixty-four cents.
Thank you. Are there any questions about the invoice list? Uh, the, uh, forty thousand for the wood chipping, did that clear the, the Georgia?
Yes, sir.
Completely gone?
Yes, sir. But I mean, we've already started with more on.
It was pretty big for them, probably. So. Any other questions? No questions, vote on the motion, mayor votes aye, mayor pro ten McAdams, council member Canitas, council member Oliver, council member Dugus. Motion passes. Item eighteen here, deliberate on council member comments. Have any council member comments? A personal note, I'd like to issue some thank yous to, uh, some certain people. Uh, Citizen Glenn B O, who was, uh, fortunate enough to be driving by my mom's house when she fell in the front yard. Uh, he stopped, offered assistance, and in doing so, ended up calling his son, our fire chief Lance B O. And, uh, Josh Hidalgo, Cole White, and Dustin Motijo took the call, showed up, they were able to get her in the ambulance, get her taken care of, get her to the hospital. She did break a bone in her leg. But if not for those people, especially Mr. B O for stopping when he didn't have to, and the, uh, the, the quick work, uh, our firefighters and the, the EMS people, uh, I want to appreciate it. Also, for Fire Chief B O sending the crew back to help my dad get her back into the house. So we didn't have another incident. So I, I truly, my family appreciates it. We thank all of you and that way, uh, that is one way that, that the citizens care about each other and our, and our fire station and our, our, our police people, uh, police officers and firefighters. Uh, they do the job that they're supposed to do. So I appreciate all of that. My family thanks all of them. And thank you, and tell your dad, thanks to Mr. Glenn B O for, for helping out. Thank you. Any other council member comments? There being none, we will adjourn this meeting at five forty-four. Thank you.